Good evening and welcome to this special meeting of the Boston School Committee. I'm School Committee Chair Jerry Robinson. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll ask my colleagues to unmute and join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Because this is a remote meeting, I will ask Ms. Sullivan to please call the roll.
Thank you, Chair. Dr. Alkins?
Present.
Mr. Cardad Hernandez? I believe he'll be joining us shortly. Ms. Lopera? Ms. Mercer? Ms. Palanco Garcia?
Present.
Thank you. Mr. Tran?
Present.
Mr. O'Neil?
Present.
And Ms. Robinson?
Present. Yes, I just wanted to let the public know that Ms. Lopera will not be able to be with us for the next several meetings. She's got some health issues to take care of. We wish her well and look forward to her return soon. Tonight's session is being shared live on Zoom. It will be rebroadcast on Boston City TV and posted on the school committee's webpage and on YouTube. Tonight's meeting documents are posted on the committee's webpage, bostonpublicschools.org/schoolcommittee, under the May 5th meeting link. The meeting documents have been translated into all of the major BPS languages. Any translations that are not ready prior to the start of the meeting will be posted as soon as they are finalized. The committee is pleased to be offering live simultaneous interpretation in Spanish, Haitian Creole, Cabo Verdeano, Cantonese, Mandarin, Vietnamese, and American Sign Language. After the interpreters finish introducing themselves and providing Zoom instructions, we will activate the interpretation icon, the globe, at the bottom of your screen. Click the icon to select your language preference. Will our Spanish interpreters please introduce yourselves and give Zoom instructions in Espanol?
Oh, good evening, Madam Chair, and good evening to everyone in the School Committee meeting. Muy buenas noches, muy buenas tardes, damas y caballeros. Mi nombre es Raul Dos Camingues. Voy a hacer su y voy a estar trabajando con mi colega Luz. Vamos a hacer los interpretes simultáneos esta noche. Por favor, para poder accesar el idioma español, buscar en la parte inferior de su pantalla y allí van a seleccionar el idioma español. Si están utilizando, por el contrario, una tableta o un celular, por favor, buscar los tres puntos en la pantalla, seleccionar allí su idioma como, de preferencia, el idioma español como su idioma de preferencia y podrán escuchar esta reunión en español. Muchas gracias.
Thank you. Well, Haitian Creole interpreters, please introduce yourselves and give instructions in Haitian Creole.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hi, everyone. Good evening. My name is Sergio Santillar, Haitian Creole interpreter. C'est un plaisir nous gêner pour nous avoir pour un premier tir pour nous présenter le programme ça. Et c'est moi-même avec Nadège qui a présenté et sous besoin d'un très long conversation qu'on va capter comme bike comme là, voir venir globe. Et puis, voir pour choisir l'ancre là, voir capable participer et nous citer aux dos et déjà bonne chance. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, a Cabo Verdeano interpreter, please introduce yourselves and give Zoom instructions in Cabo Verdeano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. Buena tarde. Mi nombre es Josiane y juntamente con José nos hemos hecho unos interpretes simultáneos, pues notiley. Para que nos tengan acceso a interpretación simultánea, nos clican en la icona de globo, en la parte inferior de los ecrans, y seleccionan Cabo Verdeano. Si nos estamos usando el móvil, nos clic en aquel tres puntinho y se hace más un proceso, selecciona Cabo Verdeano. Obrigada y buena tarde. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, our Cantonese interpreters, please introduce yourselves and give Zoom instructions in Cantonese.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Maple. Me and Ana will be Cantonese interpreters tonight. Dajahao, wo de gama ne, wo tong ana ne, zou wei, hai dajia hai ke gong dong hua fanyi. Gom ya ga, wo de huo hui kei ni go fanyi pindou la, cheng dajia hai ping mo ge xiaofang le, he dian kei diqiu yi. Yanhou le, hai shen zhe Cantonese C开头ni ge zimo ge, ge ge yu yan jia hui la. Wo li hai you peng ban di nu hua ze shou ke xiang mo le, cheng li hai ping mo ge xiaofang le, cheng zhe saang ge dian se ju geng dou. Dian yu he zhi hao shen zhe yu yan fu mo, yek dou hai jian Cantonese ni ge pindou ge. Ya gan jian la. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Well, Mandarin interpreters, please introduce yourselves and give Zoom instructions in Mandarin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hi, everyone. My name is Terry Way, and I will be your Mandarin interpreter for the meeting tonight. Dajia hao, wo shi Terry Wei, ke wo jin tian le hui shi ni men de guo yi fanyi. Dai huo le ni zai ping mu xiafang, hui kana i ke diqiu de tu biao. Ni dian xuan diqiu de tu biao, rao zai xian zhe Mandarin, ni jiu kei ting dao, guo yi de pindou la. Wo ni shi you shou shou ji hua de shi ping ban di na xiang lai de hua ne, ni kei dian ji ping mu xiafang de san ge dian. Rao zai xian zhe geng dou, ye kei ting dao, guo yi de pindou. Hao, xiexie da jia. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, our Vietnamese interpreters, please introduce yourselves and give Zoom instructions in Vietnamese.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Vi. You and I will be your Vietnamese interpreter for tonight's meeting. Ginkiao gui vi, dou tien la vi, dou vi chichijin xie la tongjitvi ku guo gui vi. Va bui tou ngai hou nai, xin gui vi nyin ba mang hen va tien tai kwakou. Ki tien tai kwakou ti tien tien viet, vietnamese. Ki bong bao do de ko tei nga de tongjitviin jit lai che gui vi hiu. Kamon shak yiu. Thank you.
Thank you. Our American Sign Language interpreters are Libby Ann Biola and Daniel Nguyen. Thank you all for assisting us this evening. And thank you to all of the BPS staff behind the scenes, who also provide support for our virtual meetings to run smoothly. We will now activate the interpretation icon at the bottom of your screen. I'd like to remind everyone to speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters. Thank you to everyone who signed up for public comment. Sign up for public comment close today at 4:30. Please make sure you are signed into Zoom under the same name you used to sign up for public comment. You can use the Zoom tools to rename yourself so that committee staff will be able to recognize you when it comes time to call on you. Thank you for your cooperation. We will begin with the approval of minutes. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the April 22nd, 2022 School Committee meeting as presented. Is there a motion?
Show move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cardad Hernandez? Ms. Lopera? Ms. Palanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The April 27th minutes are approved unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Somebody needs to be muted. Not sure who that is. Thank you. I want to thank everyone for joining us this evening for this special meeting. As you know, last week, the district presented a summary of report commissioned by the superintendent and undertaken by the Boston law firm Hinkley Allen that outlines systemic and pervasive accounts of student-on-student sexual and physical misconduct that began as far back as 2014. The report concludes these serious incidents were not addressed appropriately by school personnel and confirmed multiple systemic, systematic reporting failures by school employees. Following an exhaustive review of the Hinkley Allen report, a school quality review conducted by School Works, and with careful consideration of all possible options, the superintendent made the recommendation to the Boston School Committee that Mission Hill K-8 School permanently closed at the end of the academic year. The committee has spent the past week reading the reports, attending meetings with the Mission Hill community, and reviewing written feedback. I want to thank everyone who took time to share their perspective on this very difficult issue. I want to thank the superintendent and her team for hosting three meetings with the Mission Hill community over the past week. I am also grateful that the district is taking a personalized approach to the student assignment process, the students who are impacted by this decision. I know we have a number of people waiting to testify this evening. So at this time, I will turn it over to Ms. Sullivan for general public comment. Ms. Sullivan?
Thank you, Chair. The public comment period is an opportunity for parents, students, other parties, to make brief presentations to the school committee on pertinent school issues. Questions on specific school matters are not answered at this time, but are referred to the superintendent for later response. Questions on specific policy matters are not answered at this time, but may be the subject of later discussion by the committee. We have 23 speakers this evening. Each person will have two minutes to speak, and I will end you when you have 30 seconds remaining. Those who require interpretation services will receive an additional two minutes. Speakers may not reassign their time to others. Large groups addressing the same topic are encouraged to consolidate their remarks or choose a spokesperson to provide testimony. Written testimony is appreciated and encouraged. Please state your name, affiliation, and what neighborhood you are from before you begin. Please direct your comments to the chair and refrain from addressing individual school committee members or district staff. When I call your name, please raise your hand virtually in Zoom. Also, please make sure that you're signed into Zoom with the same name that you used to sign up for public comment. That will allow us to identify you when it's your turn to testify. We'll begin this evening with Lisa Graff, followed by Ruby Reyes, Will Austin, Susan Vitolo, Tim Klein, Deirdre Manning. If you could all please raise your hands in Zoom. Lisa?
Hello. My name is... Can you hear me?
Yes, good evening.
Hello. My name is Lisa Jean Graff, and I am a parent and an alternate member of the Mission Hill Governing Board and live in the Fenway neighborhood. This week, after the superintendent proposed closing our school, my reactions had been complicated. I have felt sadness for those who love the school and don't want to lose it. I have also felt relief and justice for all the families, students, and staff who have been harmed at the school over the years. I will not fight this closure. However, I do ask that the current students are not put at the end of the line for school assignments. Instead of waiting until after the current round of transfers are decided and shared, I request that Mission Hill students are included in the current transfer round and are allowed preferences for transferring with siblings and friends if they so wish. Let's make sure that we take good care of all the Mission Hill children, including those who already left the school previously. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ruby Reyes.
Good afternoon. My name is Ruby Reyes. I am the Executive Director of the Boston Education Justice Alliance. The Boston Public Schools students, families, and educators deserve better. They deserve leadership, central office, and a school committee who prioritizes and values students. The Missions Hill School has been a prime example of how school communities are disregarded and kept intentionally in the dark. In the last few weeks, school committee meetings, several school committee members thanked Dr. Casselius for unearthing this instead of asking why BPS does not have a comprehensive crisis response system and infrastructure in place. Dr. Casselius gave her report and said results as though they had caught the Mission Hill School in something rather than owning up to the fact that they knew about these issues several years ago. Dr. Casselius, like the additional central office staff that the report said were also culpable, chose to ignore the problem. Where the central office staff who were named as culpable, were they fired? Is that how you held yourselves accountable? While central office leadership was busy holding themselves accountable by blaming others, what you failed to do was create a comprehensive crisis response plan and infrastructure for students, families, and educators to be able to heal, recuperate, or recover. This was most evident in that you hired a law firm to investigate rather than hire a mental health team to support the school community. With all the announcements of school closures, central office staff should have developed comprehensive protocols and wraparound supports for students, parents, and educators, including developing ongoing and extensive communication with families in all the languages of the school communities, providing onsite and virtual mental health supports for school communities, not based on requests from individuals, but available to all, beginning to implement restorative justice practices, including healing circles from September. Central Office is currently responding to individual situations. In a time of crisis where people needed to come together, BPS leadership completely went silent and internal rather than practicing more of a supposed transparency. The Mission Hill School failed the families who experienced abuse, but by focusing on blaming, central office leadership is failing all school communities.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Will Austin.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Will Austin. I live in Rosendale and I work at the Boston Schools Fund. I am a lifetime member of this city. I'm a proud Boston Public School graduate, and for more than two decades, I've been a math teacher, a principal, and an education leader. My organization, Boston Schools Fund, has supported 38 schools since 2015 in Boston Public Schools. A good partner listens, provides resources, and most importantly, shares values. As a partner to BPS, I felt it's important to speak the truth tonight and speak it clearly. I agree that Mission Hill School should be closed, and more importantly, I believe an investigation into the abuse and systemic failures that enabled this abuse must be pursued. We will likely not hear from victims tonight. Some simply can't speak out because they reached a legal settlement with the district. Other victims may not feel safe speaking publicly, but those victims should not be invisible. Just because we didn't hear from them doesn't mean there wasn't sexual abuse, assault, bullying, and the withholding of special education services at this school. This committee and all of you watching should not look away from this abuse. The report is clear. The report is even clearer that the children and families were failed not just by staff members at Mission Hill School, but by the district itself. How did abuse and dysfunction of this scale go unnoticed or unaddressed by the central office of Boston Public Schools? Either the system was not doing its job managing schools, or it chose to look the other way. Neither is excusable. This committee is the ultimate authority for BPS. Where is the accountability? Where is your outrage? And what will you do? The report describes multiple potential state and federal crimes. Crimes. We urge Dr. Casselius and this committee to work with the district attorney's office to move with the urgency this matter merits. Do not wait months for a report. Do not normalize this level of failure. It is horrifying, particularly for those who are parents and educators like me. The victims, the entire city deserve answers. What did the district know? When did it know it? And what did they do or not do about it? This is not about criticism. This is not about being critical of the district that we partner with. This is about our moral obligation to children and educators. Thank you, Dr. Casselius, for bringing this tragedy out into the light. It is time for this committee and the city to do its job, follow the facts, as uncomfortable as this is. The system failed children and educators the first time. There's an opportunity now to make sure it doesn't happen again. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Susan Vitolo.
Hello. My name is Susan Vitolo, and I live in Roxbury. I've been a member of the Mission Hill community for six years. All three of my children have attended the school at one point, ranging from K-0 to sixth grade, with one of them currently in fifth grade. The summary of the investigative report that was given at last week's school committee meeting surprised me in just how accurately it captured the culture of the school. To everyone saying that it's not the school you know, I am so grateful that was your experience. But please realize that it is the school. It is not a few bad actors. It is not a few disgruntled families. It is not in the past. When I spoke with my oldest child, who no longer attends Mission Hill, about the findings regarding bullying, they exclaimed, "Oh, that would be me." How many other children and families who the investigators didn't speak to can say the same? This is not to say that we didn't also have many wonderful experiences as part of this community. That is what makes the situation so messy. It no longer matters what agenda BPS had going into this investigation. After reading the report, I can see no other alternative than following the superintendent's recommendation and closing Mission Hill School. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tim Klein.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, good evening.
Hi, my name is Tim Klein. I'm a parent of a kid at Mission Hill School. And, you know, I actually was pretty hesitant to come on here and give my opinion about whether the school should close or not because, one, I recognize that there are larger political forces at play that can outweigh the opinion of an individual parent. But also, at the same time, it's become very apparent to me at my short time at this school that this administration simply does not care what my opinion is. Why do I say that? And how do I know that? Because the entire time I've been at Mission Hill, they've never asked for the parents' opinions. They've never asked the parent community whether they wanted the school open or not. During this very trying year, they never asked us what support we needed when they dropped the bombshell on us in August and removed school leadership. They didn't ask us about our school experiences during the year. And if they did, overwhelmingly, you'd find parents here had a very, very, despite trying times, had a very, very positive experience. Yes, Mission Hill had done terrible, there had been terrible things happening there, but overwhelmingly, you'd find a parent and educator community who are really committed to this school and thought that they could turn it around. And so it's become very clear to me that the administration just not, does not care about our opinions because they never ask. So I'm here today, actually, to highlight another pattern of very troubling behavior that we need to disrupt. And I would say that we are here today, the source of why we are here, all of the sexual assault and the bullying that happened was the result of BPS failing to listen. Throughout this entire time, the seven years this went on, they didn't listen to the students who were getting bullied. They didn't listen to the parents who were speaking up. They didn't listen to the people who have these terrible things happening, and when you don't listen, you can't take action. And so BPS throughout this entire time has not listened to us at all, even when we've been yelling the entire year. And I am very troubled by that because I see that exact same pattern of behavior happening with the, uh, right now in thinking about the school committee, because they are not listening to us when we say what the equitable resource would be. And so I am asking you to listen to us now. And we are saying, this school committee, if you choose to close the school, the only right thing to do is to put us in round two priority. The administration-
Klein, if you could please wrap up.
The administration has already told us they can put us in round two priority, but they're choosing not to. And I just want to end by saying, will, is it the hard choice? Will it delay the school assignment? Is it going to put more stress on this administration to put us in round two? Yes, but the right choice is the hard choice. So I'm asking you, do right by a school community who is being punished for decisions completely outside our control. The one thing we are asking for is putting us into round two priority. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Deirdre Manning, followed by Sharon Hinton, Asia LaRae, Toyoko Oremoto, Allison Cox, Mara Smith, and Justin Rice. If you could please raise your hands virtually in Zoom. Deirdre? Deirdre, are you with us? Could you please unmute?
Apologies. Can you hear me?
Yes, good evening.
Hello, school committee members. My name is Deirdre Manning. I am the parent of two children who attend the Henderson Opera School. Following on what Mr. Klein said, we feel that Henderson Opera School, parents and administrators there are not being heard by the district. Similar to what Mr. Klein just experienced, I would like school committee members to be on notice that I feel the implosion of the Henderson Opera School will be the next embarrassment that happens within Boston Public Schools. The Henderson Inclusion School serves children who are nonverbal, have Down's Syndrome, have cerebral palsy. These are children who are medically fragile and are at risk. There's a tremendous amount of violence going on in the lower, sorry, the elementary grades of the upper Henderson School, excuse me, particularly in fourth grade and fifth grade. My fourth-grade daughter reports that there are fights nearly every day in her special classes where there was only one teacher in attendance. Another parent recently told me that his fourth-grade child ran away one morning because he did not want to be driven to school to be bullied. We feel that the district is not providing the support to the administrators and the teachers at the Henderson Upper. Those educators and administrators are being threatened by families. My daughter reports a fifth-grade girl bringing a personal protector, which is a weapon, to school. Ask yourselves, why does a fifth-grade girl feel that she needs a weapon in her elementary school? I would like school committee members to please ask the district, how many children have left since the principal was assaulted and left with injuries that have continued to harm her to this day? How many children have been late transferred into the Henderson, meaning after January? I understand that one student started in fourth grade this week, and there are MCAS classes next week. Please ask these questions before the next embarrassing thing that happens in the district is the complete lack of trust and the only place for children who are nonverbal and have other serious conditions that's a safe place for them no longer exists in a form that children feel that they can bring their parents, that parents feel, excuse me, they can bring their children to. And please ask educators and administrators, find out how many of them are being threatened, and please support them so that the, the school is safe for younger children. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Manning. Our next speaker is Sharon Hinton.
Hello. I'm Sharon Hinton, mother, educator, Hyde Park homeowner, and founder and executive director of Black Teachers Matter. With all the reports, news, op-eds about violence, guns, sexual assaults, fights in BPS, anyone would and should be concerned for overall school safety of students, teachers, school staff, and surrounding communities. And with warm weather here and summer vacation and the end of school soon arriving, there's a trope repeating itself seasonably, predictably, about the rising conversations about gun violence, shooting, youth jobs, et cetera. These comments are added to the morass surrounding desir receivership, Boston School Committee, future composition, new superintendent hiring, BTU contract negotiation, school closing, et cetera. I, for one, still don't fully understand why the timing of some of these events seem to be more than coincidental and appear to be very interrelated and causative. However, I would ask for caution, discernment, and a slowing down of some of these timelines and processes that may result in- that may result in a rushed conclusion or judgment in order to complete decision-making for the sake of political purposes, expediency, or just trying to get something completed because of fatigue or exhaustion with the mundacity of the process. All of these issues have been here for quite a while, in several instances, decades. Let's hope and pray it doesn't take that long to successfully resolve them. I'm an advocate and advocating for a moratorium on school closings, including Mission Hill School, because of a seemingly incalculable and toxic school culture verified, justified. But it also may leave empty buildings open to developers and further densification already economically vulnerable communities. The termination of school leaders, teachers, counseling programs, just to see them transferred or employed elsewhere also doesn't necessarily remove the effects, damage done, or keep it from happening again. Into intra and interdepartmental and systemic non or miscommunication at too many levels in and around BPS decisions to parents, students, teachers, and administrators, as well as the public seem ridiculously convoluted and ineffective, systemic and longstanding. Fix it. BPS budget hearings have been held with a very robust back and forth with city council. And yet, despite the increased budget, BPS still fails to exhibit a satisfactory grade on return investment. And while they clearly were reforms regarding, thank you, while they clearly were reforms regarding the presence of armed police officers in public schools, I'm almost finished. This policy seems to be taking a hit from the reports of bags of ammunition and eight guns recovered in BPS. Mass school shootings have not been an issue in predominantly black BPS schools, but police brutality, abuses of power, and the school-to-prison pipeline still is. An open, clear, consistent, transparent, and interactive line of communication has to be developed, maintained, and utilized regularly from the mayor and all stakeholders to the people and vice versa. Nothing else will work, nothing else-
Ms. Hinton? Ms. Hinton, I'm afraid you're past your time.
Yep, keep the police out of the schools, build better communication of family and students, and listen and take action to your constituents. Your customers are singing about you and the producer with their feet that you may possibly be out of business. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Aisha LaRae.
Hi, my name is Asha LaRae, and I'm a parent of a former Mission Hill student. I'm also a BPS employee. It is extremely difficult for me to come forward, but I feel it's necessary. Mama, guess what? Nobody hurt me today. This is the first thing my daughter said to me after her first day out of the new school, after transferring from Mission Hill School in 2016. First of all, I'm glad many children and families have not experienced the same as we did when we were at Mission Hill. I also want to thank a few Mission Hill educators who I did trust with my child's safety and care. However, Dr. Casilius and team, from the bottom of my heart, I want to thank you for investigating Mission Hill School. There were countless incidences of physical and attempted sexual abuse during her years at Mission Hill, which have had lasting effects on her. She was constantly shamed as a victim. There were no repercussions along the way for the aggressors. And when I raised concerns, I heard little to no solution. I also want to note that this is not a matter of gentrification, as my child is black and Hispanic, and some of her aggressors were white. These issues, sorry, these issues crossed racial lines. And I just want to put that in to comment. It has taken many years in therapy to work through trauma inflicted during my daughter's time at Mission Hill. And to this day, we cannot drive near the street of the school or she will panic and dry heat. It will take a lifetime to heal these wounds inflicted by simply attending school. As you prepare to vote, please honor the victims who have come forward and those who never spoke up by taking appropriate actions against the school. It's the only way to ensure children are safe moving forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Toyoko Oremoto.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, good evening.
My name is Toyoko Oremoto. I am a resident of Jamaica Plain and parent of two children in first grade and K1 at Mission Hill School. I grew up in poverty and experienced significant abuse as a child and young adult. However, the one thing that was always there for me was school. It was the one place and community that I could always go to, even when my home life was dark and chaotic. As a strong supporter of public education, I believe one of the most important things that BPS can provide is stability for students and families from all backgrounds. By shutting the school down, you are punishing the many students who love Mission Hill School and removing the important stability that the school has provided. I don't want to downplay the extremely traumatic experience that many families have had, including the horrific experiences that Ms. LaRae just described. But by closing our school, you are creating more trauma on a larger scale. When I told my son about the potential closure, he immediately collapsed to the ground sobbing. He has all of his hopes set on this vote. You've stated in many places that you're concerned about the well-being of our children, but by closing the school, you are creating an immense amount of grief and trauma. I urge you to keep Mission Hill School open. And in the case that you vote to close our school, I urge you to work to minimize our trauma and ensure that Mission Hill School families get priority in being placed in the schools they would like to attend and to maintain the incredible school community that we spent years building. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Allison Cox.
My name is Allison Cox. I live in JP. I'm the parent of two kids at Mission Hill School and the co-chair of our governance board. The superintendent's recommendation to close Mission Hill after failing to support and engage with our community is deeply disappointing. The accounts in the report shared last week are troubling. And the report makes it clear that the district dismissed serious concerns for years. The district said it's conducted five investigations on the school in seven years. I asked, what were they investigating if they, as the superintendent said this fall, knew nothing of problems at the school until this summer? The highly problematic choices of individuals named in the report are apparent. It is also clear that this was not an investigation, but rather an inquisition. I believe the superintendent decided to close the school long ago and spent this year curating evidence to justify that decision to you. I have multiple times asked why the positive assessments and demonstrable cultural and academic improvements in recent years have been ignored. I have been given no answer. I do not intend to dismiss the experiences of those harmed at Mission Hill. Yet, please also know that the report is flawed. It states things like, "Parents unanimously recounted explosive and violent episodes." I was interviewed. I certainly did not recount such things, and I've heard from other interviewed parents who feel the same. Our school superintendent is quoted in the report describing staff as childish and helpless. As I understand it, she has expressed regret for that description, but it's too late. Her words influenced this recommendation, and her lack of belief in the possibility of success at Mission Hill has been evident all year. I find it difficult to believe that this recommendation, coming years after the most serious harm occurred, is motivated by current safety concerns. This district is plagued by dwindling enrollment and the looming threat of receivership. How do those factors relate to recommending closure at the most disruptive moment possible? I ask that you please do not vote in favor of closure. And if you do, please listen to the families telling you the district's plan for reassignment is unacceptable and inequitable. I leave here tonight with hope that our city council, the mayor, this committee, and our new superintendent will take a deep look at the numerous ways in which the district is woefully flawed. At Mission Hill and across Boston, our students, families, and educators deserve far better than this. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mara Smith.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. I, my name is Mara Smith. I am a parent of two children at Mission Hill, and I live in Jamaica Plain. The first thing I want to say is about my own children's experiences at Mission Hill, which is as far from the portrait that the Hinckley Allen Report paints as it possibly could be. My children, who are in K0 and K2, have only experienced a safe, loving, nurturing, and academically challenging environment. And I'm so grateful to all of my kids' teachers. Hopefully, can hear this. This is not in any way to devalue the horrible experiences of families whose children were harmed at Mission Hill. But it is extremely important that the council, the BPS, and the media understand that that portrait is not even close to a full and complete picture of Mission Hill. As we've already heard other parents here tonight, whose perspectives were kept out of that report, I certainly was never asked for mine. And therefore, it cannot be accepted as accurate. And to make an extreme and seismic decision like closing our school based on a flawed report would be a miscarriage of justice. So I'm asking that you not close, vote to close the school. At the very least, take more time to get a fuller picture of the school. My second comment is about BPS and the way they have handled the impact that this will have on current Mission Hill families, the horrible timing of this report after multiple rounds of the lottery, when historically few, if any, spots are still open, after families have already made financial and other decisions based on their children's being at, their children being at MHS next year. And the recommendation of the nuclear option of closing the school is causing unique and extraordinary harm to current Mission Hill families. Again, this is not to devalue the harm that children referenced in the report have experienced.
Fifteen seconds.
BPS can and must do two things at once, even if they are acting like they can't, can't. They can help repair that harm and not cause further harm to current MHS families. And that is what we are asking. If you do vote to close the school, which I sincerely hope you do not, we ask that you do so in a way that minimizes the harm to current families as opposed to maximizing that harm, which is what the BPS's plan currently will do. There are things they could do and are choosing not to do, and they should be held accountable for that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Justin Rice, followed by Valerie Carlson, Peggy Wiesenberg, Carolyn Shadid Lewis, Seth Karun, and Edith Bazil. If you could please raise your hands virtually in Zoom. Justin?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, good evening.
Hi, so my name is Justin Rice. I live in JP. We've been at MHS since 2018. We are hearing two drastically different pictures painted of one school. The truth likely falls somewhere in the middle. So here's my take. The first time I met our kindergarten teacher was not at school, but at home. When I told my sister, a longtime teacher, that our teacher was visiting, she said, "Home visits are rare and a sign of a great teacher." I wish I had time to tell you how great she is. This is the caliber of teachers we are losing. At the same time, we've had issues at the school that this report illuminates. But when this investigation was launched, I wanted to read the full report before advocating for the school. I never imagined we would only have one week to digest it. Voting tonight is a formality. A BPS official told me the district never developed the plan in case the school committee voted to keep the school open. She said she would be, quote, "surprised" if the school committee voted to keep the school open. It's true, MHS failed to protect children, but you would think that interim leadership would make extra efforts to protect our kids. Bullying continues to go unreported. Some parents had had to push administrators to host the BMC Vaccination Clinic. Despite the superintendent's directive to vaccinate students after the curly outbreak, BMC told us that MHS has unquestionably been the most unhelpful and difficult school we've had to work with out of 250 schools they organize clinics with. The superintendent said this report was delayed because investigators learned about MHS's email server late. But the report itself says BPS knew MHS operated its own email server at least since last year. This unnecessarily delayed the report's release. Investigators found little culture worth saving. This is just mean, we have problems like every school, but we have a great group of students, parents, and teachers. And as the report notes, staff saw things, quote, "going in the right direction" before our co-teacher leaders were removed. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Valerie Carlson.
Hi there, is my voice coming through okay?
Yes, it is.
Okay, um, hi, I wrote a statement. My name is Valerie Carlson. I am actually the, a science instructional coach assigned to the Mission Hill School this year. I've worked as a science specialist and a middle school science teacher in the district for almost 20 years now. And I absolutely adore my Boston community and cannot see myself working anywhere else. That said, with all the joy and positive experience I've had over the years, I've definitely noticed a disturbing pattern of, you know, I'm going to use some harsh language here, and I'm very hesitant to use these words, but I wanted to be authentic when I wrote my statement. There is a pattern in the district and has been for as long as I've worked in the district of some scapegoating and gaslighting and use of scare tactics aimed at teachers to avoid accountability on the part of administrators and those sort of above. And, and with that, there is a great fear among educators of retaliation for speaking up when they see something. And so what happens over time is that educators hesitate to share, even when they know they really should. And so with that, I have actually decided to leave out a large chunk of what I was planning to say tonight. But what I did want to sort of point out is that when I was asked to join the school as part of a grant by the former leaders of the school, I was notified a couple of weeks before school started that the leaders would no longer be working there. And then there was a question about whether or not I would fit into the, you know, the community in the current situation. And I'm happy to say that I was invited in, and it's been a really wonderful experience. But what I do want to also point out is that with the loss of those two leaders and the loss of two fifth and sixth grade teachers, that means that we also, that our fifth and sixth grade students in those two classes significantly, pretty much lost an opportunity for their science education this year. I am not pointing-
Allison, if you could please wrap up.
I am not pointing fingers at the long-term subs that eventually replace those teachers. I am pointing out that this issue was raised from the very get-go. And we are still at a place now, two weeks before a science MCAS, where the students are just simply not prepared. And so I wish that in making such rash decisions, that this kind of thinking was put into place so that the students had an equitable, had equitable access to, to science education this year.
Thank you, Ms. Carlson. Our next speaker is Peggy Wiesenberg.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. And my apologies if I am a little shaken. I've been at two funerals today. And I am very sad about the Mission Hill School and the possibility of closure. I want to say that as a new governing board member who just joined in August, we were, the district never shared any of this information with those of us on the governing board. This is a democratically, a school based on a democratic model of education. But I'm very concerned about the undemocratic actions of the district. In a meeting with county, city councillor Lara just last evening, we were not allowed to distribute flyers through the school. The current administrator and Dr. Way wouldn't allow the distribution of flyers to the whole community to allow people to participate. There were about 40 or 50 people on the call, but everybody should have been notified of that meeting. Also, I put in the chat information that I learned and through the working with the Mata Hunt, Mata Pan community about closure and the priority for students in the school that's being closed to get their placements before any- that's being closed to get their placements before any placements are made. And those comments were blocked. I also said, put in the chat that there's precedent for using portable classrooms, and those comments were blocked. So I think this committee needs to apologize and do right and restore justice and have a policy not to close schools without engaging families and teachers and parents at least a year in advance of any possible reconfiguration, reconstitution, or closure. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wiesenberg. Our next speaker is Carolyn Shadid Lewis.
Hello, my name is Carolyn Shadid Lewis. I am a parent at Mission Hill School. I'm also a volunteer in the classroom. I've been there throughout the year, and I've also been on the search committee for a new principal. I speak from a place of having been sort of a witness of a lot of the more recent experiences. I would first like to say that when people are in pain, it's very hard to hear the pain of others. And I want to apologize to the victims who felt that they were not listened to by the community at Mission Hill School. And I hope that there can be opportunities for healing because we really do need healing as a community. And I know this is a very difficult and controversial ask, but I also ask that while you're in pain, you can start, try to see the pain of others. Because a lot of kids are in pain, and I'm not just talking about my daughter. Actually, my daughter is not in pain. She has a really wonderful teacher and has been very stable. That is giving me the ability to work on these other issues. I'm very concerned about some of the children I'm working with who are going to be displaced. I've talked to lots of parents, they're parents of color who are concerned, and a lot of teachers who feel that they are going to be maligned from this, this investigation that really isn't about them. We need truth, we need justice, but we also need healing, and we need to be an example to the rest of the city that we can work through trauma together, we can find justice together, and we can hold two truths, that people were in pain from events in the past, and people are in pain now from the events of the present. We need to find a way to make these two things work. And I want to just leave you with a thought of, a comment that my friend who is a survivor of sexual abuse, she commented, if I can find it, was basically, she said, "We have to work through the trauma because otherwise what you're actually communicating to the children is that adults are incapable of handling this, and the only way to deal with it is to not deal with it." And this is not just for Mission Hill.
I'm afraid you're past your time.
And I have finished, I'm one sentence. This is for all of Boston because there's a lot of trauma in the city, not just Mission Hill. We need to focus on the social emotional well-being of our children. Please do the right thing. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Seth Corin.
Hi, sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. My name is Seth Corin. I live in JP, and I am a parent of two Mission Hill students. I believe BPS has largely run this process in a way that's put the district's own interests over both those of students and families and teachers. Nowhere is this more obvious than in the proposed process for 2022 placement, after most public school seats are taken, after daycares have filled their classes for the fall, after admission cycles for private schools have already closed. I have very little confidence my children will be assigned to the same school, that the school will be anywhere close to where we live, that the school will otherwise be a good fit for my family, and by the time we find out whether I'm right or wrong, it will be too late for us to do anything about it. We've repeatedly asked MH, BPS, those of us in the Mission Hill community, in light of these extraordinary circumstances and in the unbelievably poor timing of this action, to do anything and everything to ensure that we're given satisfactory placements for next year. They have consistently refused to hear ideas and stuck to the original plan of a special third lottery round to allocate whatever seats might happen to be left after the first two. We've been given vague assurances about open seats at nearby schools, but no information tellingly about what schools those in, or critically what grades those seats are in. Anyone can look at the district's own school demand reports and see immediately that there will be nowhere near enough space in lower grades at Jamaica Plain schools to absorb these students, and that our community will inevitably be scattered to the winds, to say nothing of K zero or K one students who will likely be given no assignments at all, leaving their families in a completely unmanageable situation with no care for their three and four-year-olds. So in making their decision tonight, I asked that the committee consider the lack of care being put into this process, what is being done to students and families who did not bully anyone or fail to report anything, and whether closing the school outright in such a rushed and unplanned manner is really the best way to redress the harms described in the report. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Edith Bazil, followed by Shulamith Burke, Priya Dushini Kumar, Meg Rotzal, Ben Weber, Andy Crow, and Michael Heishman. If you could please raise your hands virtually in Zoom. Edith?
Thank you. Under Massachusetts law, a mandated reporter is required to act when they have reasonable cause to believe a child is suffering from abuse, including sexual abuse. Schools must take steps to prevent and respond to allegations that a student has sexually assaulted or harassed another student. Massachusetts law requires an immediate oral report, followed by a written report within 48 hours. There are fines, penalties, including criminal prosecution for failure to act. While BPS has a long history of weaponizing its mandated reporting system against parents, BPS failed its duty to act when professionals failed to protect Mission Hill students for seven years across four administrations. This administration failed for three of those seven years. Mission Hill represents what is wrong with the entire BPS system. First, there was denial, followed by a cover-up, then retaliation against teachers who spoke up and families while children continued to suffer. This represents callous indifference and a lack of accountability at the top who failed to act with a comprehensive crisis plan in a timely manner. Where was the rapid response? Where was the crisis intervention team? Where are the reports to the appropriate state agencies? Why didn't DCF and the district attorney's office be notified instead of a private law firm? Where was the special education office when students with disabilities were denied fake? Madam Chair, it is right to close the school on behalf of those injured by horrific, atrocious sexual abuse, bullying, and retaliation versus the inconvenience of a school assignment. The failures of Mission Hill are failures of central office leadership and the BPS system. BPS must provide individual paths of healing for children, family, and staff who have suffered abuse, bullying, and retaliation. BPS must also interrogate its failed system that lacks an infrastructure of accountability in a rapid crisis intervention when educational professionals perpetuate harm.
Excuse me?
To be revamped, and systems need to be put in place to ensure the basic safety well-being of all children in every school and in every classroom. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Shulamith Burke.
Hello?
Good evening.
Hi. You can all hear me?
Yes, we can.
We live in JP. We have a K one student at Mission Hill and a child who has been accepted into K zero for next year. Prior to release of the report, we had a great experience in Mission Hill. We are heartsick at the abuses that happened in the past, but we believe that to shut down the school is a non-solution that hurts everyone and helps no one. Shutting down the school would further fracture an entire school community for abuses that predate current students and staff. Inappropriate conduct of students is inexcusable and should not be tolerated. However, every school has policies for misconduct. When problems occur, school authorities fix the problem, they don't liquidate the school. Closing the school guarantees nothing except for placing a tremendous burden on everyone involved. Also, there will be years of ripple effects when siblings of the current transfers enroll in their new schools, ensuring continued overcrowding and already strained classes for an entire generation of BPS students. Furthermore, it is unclear whether the current proposed solution enclosure can be effectively carried out on its current short and timeline. We believe the Mission Hill School should remain open with a clear path to repair any issues currently within the school and remedy the current perception of MHS as a failure in need of closure on short notice. Mission Hill should be supported, not shut down. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Priya Dushini Kumar.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Priya Dushini Kumar, and I am a teacher, I have been a teacher at BPS for 12 years. I have taught at four different schools in the BPS district. MHS is the most inclusive, collaborative, and collegial place I have worked in, in BPS. I would urge the school committee to reconsider closing Mission Hill as it is a drastic and punitive measure that will adversely affect the Black and Brown students at Mission Hill, amongst others. These students have already endured the trauma of a pandemic, and now, as the fifth and sixth grade learner, students in our, our school are learning about the Trail of Tears, they will now be dispersed amongst the population, just as the Native Indians were back, back in a long time ago. I urge the committee to consider the alleged student-on-student sexual misconduct and bullying, while disturbing is by no means an isolated incident. These types of incidents are rampant across the district at various schools. I personally have experienced this while I was a teacher at the Edwards Middle School, and I have the evidence to back it up. When I filed for MCAD for discrimination, harassment, and bullying in the workplace, I was shut down. The only reason why this particular issue has come to light is because the particular victims had the means and resources to bring this forth. That being said, by closing MHS, this does not solve this massive problem that is rampant across the district. More importantly, what, what BPS does, what the school, more importantly, what does BPS, the school committee, and other leaders across the district plan to do to stop this problem? I ask the committee to reconsider keeping the school open and employing the, the solutions necessary to deal with the trauma and fix this problem of bullying and student misconduct that is happening all across the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Meg Rotzal.
Hi there, my name is Meg Rotzal, and I'm a parent and member of the Mission Hill Family Council, and I live in Roslindale. My testimony is a love letter to Mission Hill and to my daughter Joy. I want you to know that Mission Hill teaches the whole community. In K one and two, we learned how central the lives of Black, Brown, and Indigenous people are in our world. In the first grade, we learned how to see and care for others. And because of the pandemic, we learned that separation from community is as damaging as a public health crisis. In second grade, I learned to be part of a community when I saw how vitally important teachers are when they taught on Zoom every day. I ran for a seat on family council so I could support families and teach, as teachers supported us. In third grade, I learned that our school is being purposefully dismantled and leveled up to co-chair the family council. And even though our efforts at repair, healing, and advocacy have come to this vote, this is what I learned. Our school is flawed. Terrible abuse has happened, and the true culture of Mission Hill is worth saving and reconciling. I learned that being in community is the balm, and that by listening, working together, putting children and teachers first, we can confront trauma and move forward for good. I learned how to show up for a beloved community, confront hard truths, and that my daughter could learn from my action and devotion. She saw her community organize, fight, and work in coalition. She saw her mother, teachers, and friends confront hard truths, and this community held her. We learned to live through these years together, to take the lessons that we could and to make change in the ways that we are able. I want you, respected members of the committee, to know the legacy of Mission Hill is this learning, this growing, the possibility for healing, and this beloved community. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ben Weber.
Hello?
Good evening.
Okay. My name is Ben Weber. I'm a resident of Jamaica Plain, and I have a son who went to Mission Hill from kindergarten through eighth grade, and a daughter is currently in fourth grade. What, what I would say is, what's, in addition to the allegations in the report, you know, what's been shocking is the city's punitive approach to the students who are harmed, you know, and not educated appropriately. The first thing the city did was fire or suspend the principals and leave the kids without a principal for the entire year. The fifth and sixth grade students went without permanent teachers the entire year. And now that the city has a chance to help these kids, you know, it's not making any effort to get them into schools or assign them to schools where they can land on their feet. So I'd ask that this committee take up the issue of suspending the transfer process one week and allow the Mission Hill students to sign up for schools and at least know where the seats are open. You know, at the minimum, just open up some dialogue with the parents to let us know before all the seats are assigned, you know, where they can go to school. So I'd ask the committee to take up that issue. This, and the parents here were being left with very little options. We do have some options. We can file for a preliminary injunction in court and try to hold up the process. We don't want to do that. All we want is some dialogue with, with the, with the committee. We can also go to the Attorney General's Office. In addition, I just, I'd let, ask the committee to keep in mind that this is an opportunity to show the state that the, that the Boston public school system shouldn't be put into state control. You can make things right and help parents and help the kids who, through no fault of their own, are being forced to leave the school. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Andy Crow.
Hello?
Good evening.
Any luck? Okay. My name's Andy Crow. I have three kids at the Mission Hill School. I've been there the last 10 years. I've been a public school teacher for 25 years. My wife wanted me to add- My wife wanted me to add that she was interviewed for two hours and did not see any of your comment, any of her commentary in the report. I want to steal Kathy, Teacher Kathy's idea of sad, mad, and glad to vent and plea. I'm sad for my fifth grader who's been distraught and confused this past week about her school community, friends, teachers, and what she thought was her future. I'm sad for my eighth grader who's graduating that he won't be able to have Ms. Kleta, Nikia, Ms. Jerilyn, and Ms. Gennara see him graduate, three of which taught him for two years and were formative influences in his life. They are and remain at the center of this tragedy to me. I'm sad the school's been so salaciously portrayed by the superintendent's office in these reports. I'm sad for the many teachers who signed onto working at a school with strong values and curriculum, who helped a lot of Boston's underprivileged kids these past 25 years. If it's a cult to be hardworking and committed to the ideas of democracy, then sign me up. I'm sad for the families who were hurt at the school and that not enough was done to protect their kids, and I'm including all the kids. I'm mad at the superintendent's proposal to close the school. When you break an arm, the doctor does not tell you to get it amputated. I'm mad the investigation was not a neutral party by the, like, the Attorney's General's Office, but by parties paid to provide you with what you're asking them to. You talk of transparency. I agree this is a very transparent process this year to cover your tukus. I'm mad that these lawyers are people who are not qualified to judge a learning community and they get to control the narrative and they did so in an inflammatory fashion. Very good soundbites to craft a very warped view of the school.
Twenty seconds.
I'm ending with gratitude. I'm glad my kids were in the hands of some very caring and thoughtful teachers these past 10 years. The lifetime educator, I can tell you, at the Mission Hill School, there's a lot of innovative and thoughtful teaching and it's a big loss for the Boston community if you choose to close it. I'm glad I had one final chance to speak on the school's behalf. I love a lot of the teachers there for their work and I encourage you to vote to keep the school open. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Michael Heishman.
Mike Heishman, Dorchester, Beja. Right now, I'm participating in a Zoom funeral and I hope to hold it together and not cry. In 1997, my daughter was a founding student of the Mission Hill Pilot School and I was an active parent. We both believed that Mission Hill was a great school. On April 27th, it was hard and painful for me to believe that the the accusations. It is now disheartening to accept the terrible things that happened and that some school leaders had not protected some of our children and their families. What happened at the school since 2018 was also a failure of central office and past and present superintendents. Today, you are asked to close the school. The current Mission Hill community, our children, their parents, caregivers, and our educators and other school staff will pay for the crimes committed. Today, we do nothing to past and present school leaders at central office who also performed irresponsibly. I am concerned that after tonight, you will move on and central office will be spared from blame and consequences. The most disturbing incidents had happened before Dr. Casselius took office. It is essential that we know what central office had known going back to 2014 and what they had done about it. Dr. Casselius will be leaving next month. When Dr. Casselius, did you first become informed and what did you do about it? Why did it take until you until last August before announcing that the core leaders of the school would be replaced? On the second day of the school year, two veteran teachers received their suspension letter in front of students, family members, and school staff. How could you justify this humiliating public execution? By day two, the school had been decapitated. You picked an interim school principal. I have heard nothing positive about her from my Mission Hill contacts. In late October, you began an emergency review. You received this report in early January. Why did you share the report? Who knew? The January report was not shared with the Mission Hill community. Why not? They repeatedly asked.
If you could please wrap up.
I ran out of time. I'll send in my report. Finally, just it's just to be brief. This is not in my prepared remarks. What will happen to the Mission Hill community? They will be screwed. Thank you.
Chair Robinson, that concludes our speakers for general public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan, and thank you to those of you who spoke this evening and shared your perspective. Your testimony is very important to us. I'll now turn it over to the superintendent for her final recommendation and comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last week, I brought forward the difficult but necessary recommendation to close Mission Hill K eight Pilot School at the conclusion of this school year. The findings of the Hinkley Allen Report, which by now you've all carefully reviewed, are impossible to ignore. Far too many children were harmed and few adults, whose job it was, stood up to protect them. Those who were courageous enough to do so faced a hostile environment, were retaliated against and/or marginalized for speaking out. Serial incidents of alleged sexual misconduct, assault, and persistent bullying, harassment occurred over time. And the report makes clear that a number of school staff failed to follow established protocols to properly report such incidents and follow district protocols to prevent further harm. The school consistently ignored district policies, even in the face of directives to the contrary. These actions compounded the already significant impact of the alleged assaults on students and their families. Once I was notified of the allegations of pervasive bullying and noncompliance with special education services, I exercised all of my authority to remedy and prevent bullying and sexual assaults and improve compliance with special education and English language learner regulations through personnel actions, initiating two investigations and deploying additional central office supports. Even with these interventions, the school still maintains one of the highest rates of noncompliance of special education services within BPS. The investigators found that students are still at an increased risk of bullying as a result of the pervasive school culture that has been built and allowed to continue for more than a decade. The school culture allowed for the egregious behavior to persevere and is fractured beyond repair. And finally, the investigators found that despite new school leadership and significant district oversight and intervention, the, quote, "the deleterious effects of the culture" remain at the school, unquote. The report's findings make clear that we must take significant action to immediately ensure the safety and well-being of our students and begin the healing process for the victims. To do otherwise would be to turn away from the grim findings of the report and the four reports prior to the detriment of students and families of Mission Hill. We must act swiftly and with decisiveness to protect all the children who currently attend the school, to respond to the heartbreaking stories of victims found in the Hinkley Report, to whom we have a collective responsibility, and to begin repairing the breach of trust that this has caused within the greater BPS community. I do want to reiterate that we explored a range of options as we were briefed on the report and after members of my senior team and I had a chance to read it fully. These options included removing some or all autonomies, accessing staff, appointing an experienced school leader and team with a track record of success, and deploying central office support and oversight. Deploying an intervention team to make recommendations to the superintendent about how to proceed. Designating Mission Hill K a pilot as a superintendent school where the superintendent of schools has authority to access staff in consultation with the BTU and maintains all authority over next steps. And close Mission Hill K a pilot school at the end of next school year, the 2223 school year. After careful deliberation and discussion, we came to the conclusion that none of these options would sufficiently address the persistent issues that continue to plague the school. Additionally, these options would not immediately remove the risk of future harm to our students or guarantee that each student receives the academic instruction, special education, and English language learner services they are entitled to. Failing to immediately remedy the issues found in the report would also cause additional risk to the district and to the city. I want to acknowledge that this is a painstaking decision. I also want to acknowledge that the alleged incidents detailed in the report may not reflect the personal experience of every Mission Hill student or family, as you heard this evening. Nor is it a full indictment of all staff members at Mission Hill. The investigators described the reality of two schools when they write. Understand, this is a quote, "Understanding on the ground, on the ground culture of Mission Hill School required investigators to peel back several layers of propaganda and party lines to uncover the true norms and mores of the defined, that define the school and its provision of educational services." Throughout the investigation, it became clear there were two diametrically opposed depictions of Mission Hill School. One, the public version, the school as a tight-knit democratic community that elevated students from diverse and disadvantaged backgrounds through a child-centered approach with a focus on raising socially conscious and intelligent leaders rather than through standardized skill focused curriculum. Two, the purported insider's version, the school as an insular community that took advantage of its autonomous status as a pilot school to avoid accountability and regular oversight and which largely substituted its judgment on, quote, unquote, "what's best for students, particularly students of color, for the informed views of parents, the district, and the law, often to the detriment of the very students that it claims to hold at the center of its educational mission." Still in quotes, neither depiction fully captures the diverse range of educational experience revealed during this investigation, nor does services to the racial, political, and legal complexities that impacted the school's operation. However, we find that the second version of the Mission Hill School, in which the school is driven by fierce loyalty of parents and staff to an educational ideal, is far more accurate. Investigators observed a culture dominated by the heavy influence and tutelage of former administrators who led Mission Hill School in name and spirit. And yet, the school consistently failed to deliver a safe and rigorous educational climate for its students. Furthermore, we find that the school's commitment to lofty progressive ideals took precedent over providing students with the supports they needed to succeed and receive a rigorous education, end quote. Let me end by restating that critically, this investigation and the search for accountability does not stop at the doors of Mission Hill K eight school. The next phase of the Hinkley Allen investigation is examining the role of school and district officials to unearth individual and system-level responsibility given the findings before us. Simply put, we have a responsibility to act and we must do so both thoughtfully and expeditiously. And so I will close by restating my unwavering recommendation that the school committee vote to approve the closure of the Mission Hill School at the end of the current school year. Since our school committee meeting just over a week ago, our top priority has been to engage with the Mission Hill community about our recommendations. Since then, we have connected with families in several different ways. School and district staff have been available on a one-to-one basis to answer questions. The Office of Family, Student, and Community Advancement has hosted multiple community meetings so that answers could be provided to important and pressing questions and concerns. Should the school committee vote to approve the closure of Mission Hill School, BPS is ready to conduct a special registration round for students currently assigned to Mission Hill for next school year. This special registration round will run immediately after round two. School choice forms will be emailed to families and delivered to school for dissemination to families on Monday, May 9. Families will have from May 9th to May 20th to enter updated school choice forms. Families that participate in special registration round will receive updated school year 2023 school assignments no later than June 10. Families will be able to complete the registration process, file a one-on-one school choice counseling sessions remotely or in person at any of the four welcome centers, plus a satellite registration site located within the Mission Hill School. Our assignment team will closely monitor student registrations during the May 6th to May 20th registration period and connect with families who have not submitted school choice to assist them with completing the process. Our planning and analysis team has done a lot of analysis to ensure there will be ample available seats and options for families. And even still, we will make additional seats available for Mission Hill students at high-quality schools in order to ensure our families have robust options. This will include adding seats within classrooms and in select instances where physical space permits and demand indicates sufficient interest, could include adding additional classrooms. We will work one-on-one with families to help them find a good placement for their child. We know that this is incredibly difficult and we are absolutely committed to partnering with our families in the process. I just want to mention that prior to the school committee meeting last week, I, along with Dr. Eccleston and Dr. Way, met with Chair Robinson, all of the victim families who participated in the investigation, who were able to meet with us. And I have to say, those were some of the most difficult conversations I've ever had to have with families. I want to thank Hinkley Allen, Lisa Mackey, our legal counsel for her wise counsel, and the many members of my leadership team, too many to name, who have been supporting this work and supporting Mission Hill staff and families this year. I also want to thank the Mission Hill staff and families and community for their patience and their cooperation during this difficult time. I'll turn it over to you, Chair, for comments and for the vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. I'll now open it up to the committee for questions and comments. Mr. Cardad Hernandez.
I I don't know where to start. It's with mixed emotions that I listened to public comment tonight. I hear that this school worked for many families. I hear that good people worked here. I hear that a closure at this time, it's more than just inconvenient. It's scary. It's hard to trust the system. But both and, what happened here is truly egregious and I don't say that lightly after 20 years of service with youth, families, and educators. As the newest member of this body, I would I would not be doing my job if I did not vote yes on this closure. The school failed to protect students from sexual harassment, sexual assault, and harassment. The school failed to adequately support students with special need. It failed to support gender nonconforming students. It was not isolated and it wasn't a pattern. It was systemic and and the hard thing about systemic issues is that not everyone feels it. So both and. But I also have to say all the while, BPS was was given adequate information that these abuses occurred. The systems for support failed and maybe even more terrifying, a lot of people looked away. So the failure here was not just the school, but the system designed for oversight, for assessment, for support. I'm really sad. I'm angry. I'm committed to using my role on this governing body to push for continued answers and actions. My condolences to all of the students and families who have been impacted by these failures and I hope for healing. But I also recognize that sometimes it needs to have. But I also recognize that sometimes it needs to happen in a new setting, and that is more than okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cardad Hernandez. Ms. Plankton Garcia.
Thank you, Madan Shear. Ver el reporte de lo sucedido en la escuela Misión Hill fue terrible y descarrador.
To see the report of what happened at Mission Hill School was terrible and disheartening.
Solo puedo imaginar lo triste y desolador que ha sido para todas estas familias que han sido afectadas por esta terrible situación.
I can only imagine how sad and heartbreaking it has been for all the families who have been affected by this terrible situation.
Pensando en las familias y estudiantes de la escuela Misión Hill, me siento mi corazón profundamente destrozado.
Thinking of the families and students of MHS, I feel deeply heartbroken.
Porque pienso que estas familias
Because I think the families.
Han tenido que estar recibiendo desde el momento de la denuncia apoyo emocional.
Have had to be receiving emotional support since the first day of the allegations began.
Condeno enérgicamente el desapego que tuvieron las autoridades escolares que tenían la supervisión directa de esta escuela.
I strongly condemn the detachment that had the school authorities who have the direct supervision of the school.
Si tienes una casa que tiene la pintura de cascarada y agrietada y sucia, lo primero que debes hacer es buscar qué está causando estas cosas.
If you have a house that has peeled, cracked, and dirty paint, the first thing you should do is to look for what's causing these things.
Limpiar, reparar, y luego pintar para que pueda haber una verdadera reparación.
Clean, repair, and then paint so that there can be a real repair.
Pero si pinta sobre el sucio, de nuevo volverá a brotar el sucio.
But if you paint on the dirty, again the dirty will sprout.
Lo mismo con la comunidad escolar.
The same thing with the school community.
Cuando se creó la escuela Misión Hill, tenía una misión buena.
When the Mission Hill School was created, it had a good mission.
Comenzó con una aceptación buenísima de los padres y la comunidad.
It started with a great acceptance from parents and the community.
La función era buena, pero comenzó a deteriorarse.
The foundation was good, but it began to deteriorate.
La cultura de la escuela cambió.
The culture of the school changed.
Se fueron abriendo grietas.
The cracks were opening.
Entró el sucio.
Dirty came in.
El desorden y la inestabilidad.
As well as disorder and instability.
No tenían la suficiente supervisión.
They didn't have enough supervision.
El distrito no hizo hacer una limpieza profunda o un saneamiento adecuado y oportuno.
The district did not want to do a deep cleaning or an inadequate and timely sanitation.
Si hubiera hecho esto, no hubiera llegado tan lejos la situación y no hubieran tantas familias afectadas y hoy descarradas.
If they had done that, the situation would not have been gone so far and there would not have been so many families affected that now are heartbroken.
Las familias de esta escuela han tenido una experiencia de gran trauma.
The families of the school have had an experience of great trauma.
Y van a llevar ese trauma a sus próximas escuelas.
And they're going to bring this trauma to their next schools.
Si no proporcionamos un plan inmediato de sanación para las familias.
If we don't provide an immediate healing plan for these families.
No podemos limpiando las manos del problema.
We cannot clean our hands from this problem.
Hay que hacer un verdadero trabajo de sanarlos a esas familias.
We need a real work of cleaning and healing these families.
He aprendido que los resultados de los estudiantes no cambian hasta que no cambia la mentalidad de los adultos.
I've learned that the outcomes in the students don't change until we change the mentality in the adults.
Sobre todo los administradores de la educación.
Mainly in the administrations of the education.
Yo creo en la educación pública.
I believe in the public education.
En las escuelas públicas de Boston.
I believe in the Boston Public Schools.
Pero debo decir que los estudiantes de color, los estudiantes inmigrantes, los estudiantes trans son los que menos apoyo reciben.
But I must say that students of color, immigrant students, trans students are the ones who receive the least support.
Estos estudiantes son más marginados, los más oprimidos, y los más vulnerables al bullying.
These students are the most marginalized, the most oppressed, and the most vulnerable to bullying.
Necesitamos una línea de acción inmediata.
We need an immediate course of action.
Qué tipo de apoyo están ofreciendo a estos niños y familias?
What types of support are being offered to these children and families?
¿En dónde están los consejeros, los trabajadores sociales, y la reparación?
Where are the counselors, social workers, and reparations?
Las familias de la escuela Misión Hill han estado asistiendo a las reuniones del comité por meses.
MHS families have been attending committee meetings for months.
Diciéndonos que quieren información, preguntando qué va a pasar con su escuela.
Telling us that they want information and asking what's going to happen to their school.
De acuerdo o no con esta recomendación del cierre.
Agreeing or not with this recommendation of closure?
Hay que admitir que hubo una falla en el proceso.
We have to admit that there was a big failure in the process.
Debimos, se debió haber reunido con los padres de la escuela.
We should have met with the parents of the school.
Y preguntarles qué quieren para su escuela y cómo necesitan sanidad.
And ask what they want for the school and how they need to heal.
Las juntas escolares existen para tomar en cuenta la visión y los valores comunitarios.
School boards access to take into account community vision and values.
Mi prioridad absoluta es enfocarlo en los resultados de los estudiantes.
My absolute priority is to focus on students' outcomes.
Y me estoy preguntando, cambiar de, ya, cambiar de escuela ahora, ¿es en realidad mejor para ellos?
Is changing schools now actually better for them right now?
Como mamá, debo decir que las transiciones en todos los niveles son muy difíciles y estresantes.
As a mom, I must say that transitions at all levels are very difficult and stressful.
Sobre todo cuando se trata de nuestros hijos.
Especially when it comes to our children.
Mi hijo Orlando, este año pasó a una escuela diferente a la que estaba.
My son Orlando this year moved to a new school from where he was before.
Señores, la transición no ha sido fácil.
Let me tell you that the transition has not been easy.
Ni para él, ni para mí.
Neither for him nor for me.
Los cambios que experimentan los niños cuando son cambiados de escuela son bien difíciles.
The changes that children experience when they are changed schools is very difficult.
Noté que mi hijo cambió su conducta, su comportamiento.
I noticed the change in my son's behavior.
Hasta el punto que no quería levantarse para ir a la escuela.
To the point that he didn't even want to go get up from bed to go to school.
Me auxilié de la enfermera de la escuela y pude conseguir que la escuela, a través de, me diera apoyo socioemocional.
I got help from the school nurse and I got my son to have social emotional support.
Quiero insistir que los niños de la escuela Misión Hill también deben recibir ese apoyo emocional.
I insist that the children from the Mission Hill School also need to receive this kind of support, emotional, social emotional support.
Quiero decir finalmente, porque sé que se me terminó el tiempo, que tenemos que enseñar a todos a tener una visión inclusiva.
And finally, because I know my time ran out a long time ago, we need to teach everyone to have an inclusive vision.
De tolerancia, señores, de respeto mutuo con nuestros estudiantes.
Of tolerance, of mutual respect with our students.
Con estudiantes de color, nuestros estudiantes trans, inmigrantes, aprendices del idioma inglés, discapacitados.
With students of color, with trans students, immigrants, English language learners, and the disabled.
Deben sentirse aceptados y amados.
They must feel loved and accepted.
Y no solo hacerlo en la escuela Misión Hill, sino en todas las escuelas. Esto es algo que me toca mucho y estoy profundamente conmovida.
And this is something that we have to do with every single school, not only with MHS. I'm really touched and moved with this.
Muchas gracias.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Dr. Alkins.
I was at a funeral this past Saturday for a relative. And I recited a poem. And on the way out, people shook my hand and I, someone shook my hand and pulled me in close and said that they needed me to vote no on closing the Mission Hill School. And I say that not as a commentary on whether or not I thought it was the appropriate time for that. I say that because I respect that it is a testament to the belief that the people have in the vision of Mission Hill School, the belief that they had in its ability to bring transformative equity and the love that people have for the impact when it was created. It is not lost on me that there are diverse views about the culture that exists at Mission Hill School. Many people experienced positivity in totality. I also spent the last week really thinking about sort of all the emails we've been getting about mask mandates, oddly enough. And the reason that I thought about that is because we've had conversations about minimizing risk for our student populations and for our teachers and for our staff. And when we talk about that, we talked about that so passionately. And I think about what came out in a hundred and eighty-eight pages that detailed physical, social, emotional trauma, nothing less. And so I respect the notion of the positive experiences of everyone, acknowledge it. And I also have to acknowledge the other side of that, which is not what Mission Hill School claims to have represented. As much as we say that other people's reports, witness accounts were not also included in the report, I will also throw this number out, fifty-six percent. Fifty-six percent, particularly LGBTQ students do not report incidents of abuse, discrimination. So as much as we're not hearing about the positive experiences, I guarantee you, we're not hearing the totality of the negative experiences by any stretch of the imagination. And in that sense, my responsibility in this role is to guarantee that every learner gets a quality education. And part of that is to try to, as best we can, guarantee that physical, social, and emotional safety. And so I wouldn't, I, to echo what Mr. Cardad Hernandez says, I wouldn't be doing my due diligence if I said no to closing the Mission Hill School. It would, on my part, to even think that we would potentially be exposing a risk of something that we've established as being, not just an isolated incident, but systemic to it. And even more unfortunate about the nature of the incident is that it's systemic and that people were afraid to actually say something, families, teachers. People within this community became afraid to say something. And that is not something that we need, we want. And I know that as part of this committee, I own that because that's now, this is my community in the same way that it is your community, and I have to go through this healing in the same ways that you all have to go through this. But I do assure you that we will get through this together and our commitment needs to be to how we are going to do this together, how we are going to ensure that everyone gets the supports moving forward. I certainly apologize to all of the families that have been involved in this process. And I thank all the families involved in this process for their advocacy and their passion, because we know that this is not easy. But thank you, Dr. Casilius, for, again, the report and just being willing and being on call for questions and meeting with families. But I do know that this is something that, you know, in my gut, we have to do.
Thank you. Mr. Tran.
Thank you for allowing me a little time to offer my two cents. Well, actually, I like to take this opportunity to speak directly to the parents, particularly those who are lawyers, who have called me for the last two weeks and have expressed your ideas as well as your thoughts on this issue. I like to say that I hear you. I understand your perspectives. I understand where you're coming from, whether you agree with the, you know, with the superintendent's recommendation or not. I see both sides. Having spent a lifetime dealing with discrimination issue, sexual assault, sexual harassment, and continue to do so until today. We all know that finding, establishing, and determining whether an incident of sexual harassment or an incident of discrimination did occur or not is very much factually and legally supported by the law. We all know that. The problem that we face ultimately is to, is how to, how to come up with a set of remedies that would effectively and productively resolve the, 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 uh, the problem. And as a matter of fact, after many years spending in, in, in this area, I always, I have always found that the remedial, uh, procedure for this kind of issue, for these kind of problems have always been lacking. As a matter of fact, there's no way to resolve it effectively one hundred percent that it would resolve everything. If, if, if it does, I, I, I would say that discrimination, racism had already stopped, you know, years ago. As a matter of fact, it's not. Uh, sexual harassment, um, since, uh, Clarence Thomas till now is, is always on the rise. So how do we come up with a, you know, with a set of remedies that would, that would pretty much without any kind of very, very solid best practice? How do we resolve it? I look at this issue as a, as not an individual issue. It adversely impact a whole community. Within the bounded area of Mission Hill, it's a community. And it, it affects the, that whole community. So what is the, the best remedy for, for, for that community? Well, it all boils down to the best interest of the children. Um, again, to, given the fact that I have only forty seconds or so to, to speak, I, I, I like to, uh, stress the fact that I hear you. I know that many of you had pretty much chided me for not speaking out or for not, for, for not expressing my, my thoughts on, on several rights issue. Here I am. I'm addressing it. The bottom line is the remedial procedure that would effectively deal with an entire community. So please understand that for lack of better, for, 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 right now in the current, um, society, for lack of the best resolution to resolve this. Given the fact that the administration had already explored many other options that I, I see as, you know, um, very, very thorough thinking type of, um, uh, solutions, but the, the ultimate, the ultimate decision comes down to closing, um, that bounded area. So that that community is no longer be affected by this kind of deleterious, uh, infection, let's say. So please understand where I stand. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. O'Neil.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair and Superintendent, for your opening comments. And I, I also want to thank the folks who spoke tonight and the folks who spoke last week and have been reaching out to us with very balanced, nuanced viewpoints, and I do appreciate that. And the comments from my fellow members tonight are really, really thoughtful and I really honestly appreciate what each of you have said and, and have, um, it, it, it is really resonated within me and I'm not going to call out each of the pieces, but understanding the nuances here, understanding the impact to families. Um, the victims, the, the challenges of transitions. All that is important, but also what our ultimate goal is here. And I, I deeply appreciate the superintendent talking tonight and also the work that I know she has done to consider alternatives. And the fact that the superintendent laid out tonight her thought process and what she and her team considered. I also agree, after reading the report, um, I see no other alternative than supporting the superintendent's recommendation tonight. And so, um, I will do that. But Superintendent, I would love to hear, and it has been brought out both in public comment, in the, in the meetings with parents this past week, in the meetings with the Leadership Council of the School. And in the comments of my fellow members tonight, I'm just interested in your thoughts, both how your district, how the, our district, excuse me, your team can really wrap their arms around, um, all of our students here, because that's what we are concerned about, right? And provide support for them and deeply appreciate that you talked about, um, meeting with the victims' families and how difficult that was. So how do we provide social, emotional support on, for students on transitions, number one? And number two, um, we did hear a number of folks talk and you talked about, uh, about the, the second round of assignment that's about to happen. You talked about having a special round right after that. Could you just help that, help us bridge the gap on the assignment piece for, for families? Because there is obviously a lot of concern about that, uh, about the next step for our families.
Thank you to all of the members for your comments and for your question, um, Mr. O'Neil. Um, I have asked Drew Eccleston to work with Dr. Way and supporting the families currently with our Coordinated Behavioral Health Team to ensure that we are providing all of the supports that are either needed individually for families and students or to the entire community to move forward with the healing. Um, I have also asked Dr. Eccleston to ensure that our school leaders who receive students, um, that we have plans in place for those parents who want to have plans in place. There may be some who don't want them, but who elect to have them, they will know that they will have opportunity to have social work services and, um, counseling services, um, next school year as well. And, and also we've talked to the school leaders and will continue to talk to school leaders that any stu, any teachers and staff from Mission Hill School will be welcomed, respected, and, um, helped to onboard into their new community. And so we will continue to watch and monitor that through our school superintendents and our school leaders. Um, and so Dr. Eccleston, uh, will work with, um, his team to be sure that that happens. So that's the support that we're going to provide. Um, the second thing on assignment is that immediately tomorrow, upon any affirmative, uh, vote this evening, uh, we will meet with families and start, we've already been meeting with families, as you know, the past week, we've had three meetings to talk about transitions, to make sure all families were aware and knew. They will be in all languages, so that families have services in all languages. We will have electronic, um, ways to give, give your choices. We'll have one-to-one meetings. They can go to a welcome center if that's more convenient. We'll have a transition services and satellite support at the Mission Hill School to support families. Uh, there are about one hundred and sixty-nine families that need to make a choice. And so, you know, as you know, we have fifty thousand students within the Boston Public Schools. And we've had about seven thousand less students over the past several years. And we feel very confident that working one-on-one with parents with their choices, we should be able to meet, um, their choices and get them placed. Um, and so we are committed to doing that and working with each and every family. Um, and that's, that's, uh, something that the team has been working on, um, already. The reason that we can't do, um, round, put them in round two is one, we've already done round two and that would delay it somewhat of six to eight weeks. And we think that they could get their choices, uh, better met with a one-to-one, um, placement and, um, coun, and counseling and support. And we know that if we have to get their choices first, for us to really, with precision, um, increase class sizes or, because we have to work with the BTU on that and it, you know, that, you know, would be critical. And then we also know that if we add classrooms, that then we need to work with school leaders on any classrooms that we need to add. So I have asked for the Mission Hill families this past week to have patience for this vote to happen. So that, uh, tomorrow, starting tomorrow, we could start to get a handle on what their choices are. Once we know their choices, that is when we will be able to say, okay, we need five at this school. We have this friend group that is interested in moving together. We have this, um, opportunity here at this school. And then they will start to, um, craft, um, the solutions for uh, the Mission Hill families. And so that's how we plan to do it. I don't know if Denise Snyder wants to speak anything about that. Um, but I, I think I accurately depicted that. I heard it three times.
Hi Superintendent. Hello, uh, School Committee. Um, Superintendent, you are absolutely correct. Um, adding people to round two after it's closed would delay this significantly for these families at Mission Hill and for the thousands of families citywide who've been waiting and are counting on a May thirty-first. Adding seats is a much better opportunity to meet people where their needs are and where they are. I just want to confirm that. And I will be, um, along with, uh, three other staff at Mission Hill tomorrow, starting to, uh, work with families.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder, for your work and for your team's work here as well. Thank you, Mr. O'Neil.
And thank you, Superintendent, for more clarity on that, um, as well as the, the first question you answered as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're on mute, Madam Chair.
Sorry, Mr. Card, Mr. Cardad Hernandez.
This is my only question this evening. And again, Superintendent, I just want to say thank you for, for your leadership here. Um, and I know tonight I also want to focus on the vote in front of us. But I think there are real questions around, uh, sort of what happens next in terms of phase two of, of, um, sort of figuring out, uh, outside of the school and at the central level and the district level, um, where we, where we failed. Um, and I think you spoke to that briefly last week and I really appreciate it, but I think some clarity around the urgency that you are feeling here and then what that will look like and, and even some sort of rough, a shell of sort of what we can expect. Um, because I know, listening to my colleagues tonight, we're gonna push, uh, the, the community is gonna push. And there's a lot of answers that we need in order to understand where the systems and the levers for that system failed. So, one, we can hold the folks accountable. And then, two, we can ensure that this doesn't happen at another school and to more children and to more families.
Absolutely. And that is a, a great, um, reminder. Uh, and I'll be more clear. Uh, we absolutely have another phase of this investigation. There were other staff members at the district office named. And so because we had the timeline for registration and needing to, you know, make recommendations and choices and all of that for next school year, we split it in two halves. Um, and so there will be, and I, I anticipate getting the next phase done somewhere in the first week of June. Um, so that I can take that in and I, um, will come forward as soon as I possibly have that report in front of me and I can read it. You know, I hope it's not a hundred and seventy-nine pages like this one. Um, but I will, uh, read through it with my team and the legal team and the city's legal team. And we will, uh, then bring, bring it forward in full transparency to this body. Um, and then if there are any recommendations, there may be, um, uh, an overview and summary that I will bring to you on what has happened with personnel. Um, but certainly I can tell you what systemic changes I would recommend. Um, and bring forward some recommendation, recommendations prior to my departure as superintendent uh, regarding how we might prevent the systems in the future. One thing already you know about is creating this risk management office, which we have now three positions posted. Um, we had done an offer a while back, but, uh, that person was unable to take the job. And as you know, there's a labor shortage. And so we are, uh, actively seeking, uh, leadership within this risk management office. As you know, a risk management office identifies risks such as this. It then, um, could, develops controls around that risk. And then monitors those controls and makes remedy throughout a system. And it then has self-auditing. Um, the board, when I first came, had talked about having an internal auditor as well and had, uh, prior funding and then the pandemic hit. And we had just been continuing, um, to, uh, develop this risk management office. Um, and so we, I want to have that in place before I leave office here, so that, um, those systems can start and we can get, get going on it.
Thank you. And clarity around a, a June timeline with understanding that, you know, you are not driving the investigation and you have to wait for the report.
No, um, Lisa Mackey, our lead legal attorney, will ensure that that happens along with Dr. Drew Eccleston.
Dr. Caselli, as just for point of clarification, this next phase will both look at um, and give opportunity for us to hear from the, um, folks at the school who were, who were put on leave, et cetera, where we learn to understand the next steps with regard to school personnel as well as district personnel that we, that we've become aware of, that had some involvement.
I will work with the legal office on what I can share around personnel data, uh, in terms of any discipline that will happen. Um, so, because there are some protections there. Um, and so I will do that, but in, certainly in terms of systemic remedies, I will bring forward, um, some recommendations to the school committee on what we'll be doing operationally in terms of systemic remedies.
Thank you. And I just want to join my fellow members in thanking you and, um, the staff and families, um, particularly victims at Mission Hill. But at this point, as we know, as we move towards school recommendation for school closure, everybody becomes a victim. Um, and this, this is a hard one for families that were new to the school, that were not part of its past. Um, and, but who, but also are being impacted, um, by this. And I join my fellow members in saying, as a district, we have got to do better. Um, any child being harmed is one child too many. Any family being hurt is one family too many. Um, and we need to look at the resources that we are providing for mental health support, counseling, everything. Um, the issues of bullying are becoming more and more rampant in our district or people are becoming more aware of those things. We have got to find ways of putting together the supports that are needed. We need to work with the city. If we don't have them ourselves, because this is a Boston problem.
That's right.
You know, these are the children of Boston, but this is a Boston problem. Our adults need support. Our families are exhausted. Our teachers are exhausted. Our adults are exhausted. But our children won't improve if our adults can't be there for them. So I just look forward to our looking critically at the support system as we move forward and the lessons that we are all learning, unfortunately, from this circumstance. Are there any more questions before we move on? Right? If not, we will now move on to tonight's action item. There are no further questions. I'll entertain a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation to close the Mission Hill K-Pilot, K-8 Pilot School effective June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two, as presented. to close the Mission Hill K, K to A Pilot School effective June 30th, 2022 as presented. Given the late closure, BPS is committed to working one-on-one with every impacted family and student to identify all solutions available. This will include a temporary waiver for special assignment process, which will provide the ability for families to consider schools outside of their home-based assignment list. The expansion of capacity at schools, the assignment of displaced students ahead of currently wait-listed students and other tools is necessary to ensure every displaced student is assigned to a high-quality school of their choice. Is there a motion?
Move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? During that, Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cardad Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Lopera? Ms. Palanco Garcia?
Ask them.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The motion is approved with five yeas and one abstention.
Thank you. This has been an incredibly difficult decision. Um, there are no easy solutions, but I believe this decision, as painful as it is, puts our district on a path towards healing. The safety, health and wellbeing of our students must remain our top priority. We have a lot of work to do to rebuild trust with our families and together we can emerge from this a stronger district. Thank you. Is there any new business?
Yes, I have, uh, just a more of a check-in. And so we also heard this evening from, I believe it was, um, Ms. Manning about some of the issues going on at the, uh, at the Henderson. Could we get a little bit of context on how that's being addressed, things like that?
We will. I spoke, um, with our legal office, uh, office and we'll make sure that we, um, update the school committee on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes-
And we, and then we reach out to that testifier as well. We'll do both.
Okay. That concludes our business for this evening. The next remote school committee meeting will take place on Wednesday, May 11th at 5:00 PM. If there's nothing further, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Move.
Motion. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Thank you. Apologies. One moment. Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cardad Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Lopera? Ms., uh, Ms. Palanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes, good night.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you all and have a good night.